On November twenty seventh, two thousand six, six thirty P. M., considering the following petitions. Uh, first one we have is continuance Omni Point Communications, five twenty seven Pataca Boulevard, to allow installation of wireless telecommunication facility and related equipment. Yes, sir. Why don't you state your name and address?
Sure. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Brian Grossman. I'm an attorney with Prince Label, Glovsky and Thai. We represent Omni Point Communications. Office address is one hundred Cambridge Street, Suite twenty-two hundred, Boston, Massachusetts, oh-two-one-one-four. I was president at the last hearing. If I may, I'll start off. At the last hearing, pretty much I think the issue came down to notice, not of the abutters, but of, uh, unit owners and potential unit owners. And we talked about how to, how to deal with that issue. One thing that was clear was we were going to require a great deal of cooperation from, from Grandview, or the developer itself. Um, I'm happy to report that we, we received a tremendous amount of support and cooperation from Grandview. Uh, they provided us with a list of the addresses of the unit owners, uh, the mailing addresses as specified in the purchase and sale agreements for, um, parties who had entered into a purchase and sale agreement but hadn't yet, um, closed on their units. They provided us that list as of, with a date as of November twentieth. Uh, Ron DeCola, who is the project manager for Grandview, is present as well. As of November twentieth, as I said, we got the list. Uh, my office sent out mailing, certified mail, return receipt requested. Um, I have the white slips and green cards, uh, for you. Um, I have all the white slips for all of the, the notices that were sent out. I have green cards for all those that were returned as of today. And I have a copy of the revised notice that, that went out. Since November twentieth, I spoke to Mr. DeCola today, um, as we talked about how to effectuate notice to a party that, um, wouldn't have been known on November twentieth, but would have, may have executed a purchase and sale agreement afterwards. Uh, my understanding is that there in fact were no parties that weren't on that November twentieth list. So, we don't have anything, a copy of the notice that's signed by a party that, um, executed a purchase and sale agreement, uh, that didn't get the certified mailing because there were no such parties. So, I can provide that information to you.
Okay, great. Yeah, would you, can you bring those up to us? Okay, um, how many people did you actually send these certified letters out to?
Uh, approximately twenty.
Twenty? Okay. Now, I, I see a copy of the master deed, um...
I was gonna get there.
Is it, isn't in this, is, is that in the master deed at all? There's a possibility of some type of, uh, communication tunnel going in, uh, or will it be in this master deed?
There is. The master deed is already recorded.
Yeah.
Uh, and there is. It is in, um, I believe it's paragraph fourteen, the declarant reserve, uh, dec- declarant reservations. Uh, I think it's sub-paragraph E, that talks about the sole and exclusive right and easement, uh, in their sole and absolute discretion to own, operate, install, maintain, repair, replace, license or lease communications equipment, including without limitation cellular microwave, microwave relay towers on the roofs of either or both buildings, uh, including the perpetual easement and right to use any associated utility closets, connections and conduits within the building. And any and all revenues derived therefrom shall be the sole and absolute property of the declarant. Uh, the reason I've provided the, the master deed to you, one is to, to evidence that paragraph, but two, in the purchase and sale agreement, uh, one of the things that, um, one of the paragraphs in there, uh, deals with the condominium presentation and at the, uh, with the condominium presentation, there is a, a recognition that they've received a copy of the master deed, that they've reviewed it, they've had an opportunity to ask any questions, um, and that's part of the purchase and sale agreement.
Yeah, that's fine. That's, that's, uh, that's actually gonna be tech, protect the individuals or they're gonna, their, their lawyer should pick that up, let them, let them know that there is gonna be a cell tower on top. Um, now, um, the cell tower, is this gonna be for the condo association, or is Mr. Gagnon gonna, um, um, own the cell tower? Have we decided that yet?
Um, I, from...
Once, once this project is done and he turns it over to the condo association, does the condo association get the revenue from this cell tower?
No. My understanding and, and based on the declaration of, or the reservation of rights, um, under that I just read, the, the revenues, uh, will go to, uh, to the declarant, the, the developer.
So, Mr. Gagnon, he, he pretty much owns that space where the cell tower is going and, uh, and he's gonna collect the revenue from it?
He's gonna have a perpetual, he, he'll have control, but by, by way of an easement, and he will, as far as I understand it, collect the revenue.
Does any type of monies at all go to the, um, condo association at all, or, or not?
Not, not that I'm aware of.
Nothing at all?
Mr. DeCola's saying no.
Okay. Um, let's see if there's anybody here from the condo association, see what type of input they have. Is there anybody here that'd like to speak in favor for this petition? In favor? Yes, sir.
I am, uh, Michael Sullivan, five twenty-five Pataca Boulevard. I bought the unit at Grandview on October twenty-third, two thousand six. I entered into a purchase and sale agreement in, uh, May of two thousand five. My original conveyance date was scheduled, uh, for the week of September eleventh, two thousand six, but was delayed by the seller. According to the letter from Grandview Condominium dated November seventeenth, an agreement was entered in on September twenty-sixth, two thousand six. I received this letter by certified mail on November twenty-second, two thousand six. The letter offered us to, as owners, and I, I'm not sure I can say I represent the owners, but I can certainly represent myself, is that some of the questions I have as a person who lives at Grandview is, uh, for instance, what maintenance will be required by Omni Point? And what impact will this work have on the quality of living conditions at the condominium? Although it is a passive, and I quote, "A passive site," I know of no sites of any antennas or anything that doesn't require maintenance. So, in that case, is the maintenance going to be a part of something that will destroy the quality of life at Grandview? The, I have not had the ability to see how high the antenna, if it does exceed the roof height of the building, and what effects will that have on the aesthetic qualities of the building. Now, I realize that this public hearing has been continued a number of times, but you have to remember, I didn't know about this public hearing until I watched you on TV one night.
Well, that, that's why we continue it a number of times.
And I appreciate that.
They didn't reach out to the, uh, the owners that, that they did buy and, and prospective owners, so that's why we did continue it. So, we're here to, uh, work with you as, as much as we can. We're, and naturally, we're trying to, uh, um, help Mr. Gagnon, but we wanna make it right for the, um, people that are buying there.
My, my intent here is only to ask the questions that I hope to get the answers for, is that, for instance, if Omni Point were to be sold, or to can, uh, stop doing business in Massachusetts, um, not unlike Sprint not doing business with, uh, being bought out by Nextel, and they would decide that that antenna site wasn't usable any longer, would the association then be responsible for an abandoned site? Which would, I think, in my opinion, since it has to puncture the roof of a building that's seven stories high, has to be a consideration for owners and future owners at, uh, Grandview. Lastly, and I think the question was answered by counsel, is that what if any consideration does the agreement that was entered into on September twenty-sixth, two thousand six, uh, who is the beneficiary of this proposed agreement? And if I understood the counsel's response, it would be the declarant of the master deed. It's my position that as of October twenty-third, two thousand six, I own a percentage of the common interest where this site is going to be located. And no agreement, uh, any agreement can be made, but you can't surpass the laws of the Commonwealth stating that condominium law, you own a percentage of common interest in the property. If this variance is granted, then they would have to enter an agreement that says, okay, you now have a right to go up under the roof of the condominium in which I live. So, I, my point is, I don't believe that Grandview Condominium LLC cannot enter into an agreement that then puts the association in a position where they might be responsible for further maintenance or further destruction by way of storms or lightning and so forth. And if, if that's clear, and the declarant is the only one, can the declarant then say, as percentages of common ownership are divvied out, in my case, one point oh-six or whatever? Am I responsible for that, or am I entitled to any of that? Those are questions that I think that probably are new because condominium, I mean, uh, antenna sites very infrequently, in my experience, are put on top of residential buildings. Thank you.
Okay, uh, it depends how he sets up his condo docs, uh, this master deed. Um, some people might do it when it's fifty, fifty percent occupied, they turn it on to a condo association, some might do it seventy-five percent. It all depends how they, they set that, uh, master deed, uh, up. Um, we're gonna get the attorney back up here and, and see if he can answer some of your questions. Um... Can you answer any of his questions that he had? Did you hear what he had to say?
I did. Um, in terms of, and I apologize for my voice, um, in terms of maintenance, once constructed, it's visited one to two times per month, um, by authorized personnel. That's a, a technician for Omni Point. Um, it's visited using generally an SUV-type vehicle of Ford Explorer or a Ford Expedition, uh, so it's not a heavy construction-type vehicle. And as I said, that's on average one to two times per month, one individual accessing, um, the, generally the equipment room itself. Um, so it would be no more intrusive than someone having a guest. Um, the, in terms of impact on quality of life, the facility itself, the antennas, the, the external elements don't produce any noise. Uh, the equipment cabinets will be located internally, um, and they do, they are self-regulated in terms of, in terms of, uh, heating and cooling. They have small fans, but again, they'll be located inside an equipment room, and, and the noise really won't be, uh, audible outside of that equipment room. In terms of Mr. Sullivan's experience with not having much experience with these being placed on residential buildings, um, I have. Um, I've worked for several different carriers. I've probably been involved in one way or another with over three or four hundred sites. In terms of locations on residential buildings, we've had, uh, I've done locations on apartment buildings, on condos, on hospitals, in churches. Um, and so, in, in terms of impact, especially on, on those kinds of, of installations, it's a, it's a passive use. There really isn't, uh, much of an impact. That's why we've had a lot of success, um, using these types of installations, using, uh, churches who are especially sensitive to interruptions and sound. Um, when they've asked for references and talked to other churches, um, they've usually gotten positive feedback, and, and that's, um, you know, been, been a factor in their decision.
Yeah, we have a little different situation here. Um, yeah, usually if it's a church, if it's another residential building, they're collecting a revenue. These people here are buying into this condo association, and they get nothing out of it. They might have a little aggravation by not getting a thing out of it. If they were getting something out of it, they're willing to put up with the aggravation, uh, but they're not getting ten cents out of this. Um, the owner of, of, who's putting up this project, Mr. Gagnon, is gonna, gonna collect all the revenue. Um, we're gonna see if there's anybody else that has, uh, anything to say about this, but, uh, um, all right, let's see what they have to say. Anybody else like to speak in favor, in favor? Anybody in opposition, in opposition? Yes, ma'am?
Hi, I'm Lynn Shepard. I live at ninety Bedford Avenue, and I also was here last time this came in front of it. Um, I do have several reasons for opposition. Um, one of the, the things is, uh, an old neighbor has recently purchased a condo, and my last communication with this elderly, um, couple, they were under the impression that their condo was going to, um, you know, their condos fee were going to be lowered by this. Unfortunately, uh, you know, it is all hearsay, um, and, you know, like I said, they, they assumed that they were going to get some money from it. My biggest problem with another cell tower is the proximity of another cell tower that is just two streets over on the Saab Tower. Um, we have an overlapping radius. The cell tower from the Saab Building points directly to the condos, and it's within two hundred feet. Then we have this cell tower overlapping that section, that radius, to the, um, Kingsborough side of the building, where the two are going to be intersecting, um, you know, both towers radiating. Um, you know, I, I realize that, that health concerns, we don't know what, what could come of this ten years, if even anything, but to expose, um, the, the ten, fifteen houses where this, those two circles meet with getting bombarded from both sides with, with cell towers, um, and what they could or couldn't be admitting. Um, and when I first came to the meeting, as I had stated before, the very first time this was proposed, it looked nice on paper, and, you know, I said, okay, what's one cell tower in my neighborhood? But like I said, we have one already on the Saab Tower. We also have one on Lowell General. We have one on the Church of the Nazarene. I mean, this is within one mile. Um, and it, I, I'm not sure, how, how many feet away from a cell tower does the city have to notify the abutters?
I believe it's a three-hundred-foot radius.
Three-hundred foot?
Yes.
You know, um, and, and like I said, in, in my case, when I was notified, I thought I was only working with one cell tower. And then when I little, did a little digging, there's a whole bunch of them out there already. Um, on, as I started to research cell towers and everything, I also came across, uh, several cases where the FAA regulates these cell towers and says you can only put out a certain amount of radio frequency waves. And they have found that, um, some of these towers are actually pumping out more than they should have been. And the, the cities don't have seven thousand dollars or the manpower to buy the equipment and send somebody out to keep checking on these. And it, it wasn't until a, a private resident bought his own equipment and took a look at, at what this cell tower was putting out. And does the city of Lowell go and, and check to make sure that they are within the FCC? Or, or do we leave that up to the, you know, the FCC or the, the owner of the cell tower, the one who's reaping all the money from it?
I would think it would be the owner of Omni Point, whoever's putting the cell tower up. They're, they're responsible for it. The FCC, the FCC, uh, takes care of that.
Is, is the, the city, you know, doing checks on, on them too, to make sure that, that all of us that are sitting next to these towers are, you know?
If the city gets any complaints, I'm sure they'll send somebody up to investigate it, but if they, and I'm not sure. If there's, if there's no complaints, I'm not sure if they check in on a daily basis, or I wish to say yearly basis, or...
But these waves are colorless, they're odorless, and they make no noise.
Right. Well, like I said, unless we get complaints...
This tower is going, going to be looking, you know, it's directly, as you look out my bedroom window, it's right there.
Right.
I mean, is, is anybody looking out for me and making sure that, you know?
Absolutely. That's why, that's why we continue this for three times, uh, that, to take care of the neighbors, take care of the people that's gonna move in there. Like I said, if you get problems with the quality of life with, uh, TV, television, um, uh, radio, uh, then you, you call the, uh, building department, someone at City Hall, and they'll send somebody up to investigate it, and I'm sure they'll get something done with the, uh, with the cell tower. If it, that's, I mean, it does get approved. Or if there's a problem somewhere from a, a cell tower, that's another location.
But those are, those are, you know, my concerns about, about the whole situation. You know, I, I just think that for our little area over there, we've, we've already taken on a great burden, and there must be other locations that are just as suitable, that, that maybe even the city of Lowell has for a, a lot of land that's right there sitting, doing nothing, that you could collect the, the eight hundred to two thousand dollars a month and, and reap some benefit out of a cell tower there that's not residential, not an overlapping, um, radius of, of towers, and doubling the, God knows what could potentially be coming out of it and be found ten years from now.
Okay. Thank you very much. Anybody else like to speak in opposition? Okay, I'm gonna open up the board and see what they have for, for questions. Good, Jack?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. Um, first, the, the reality is that, uh, the city cannot tell the FCC what to do. Um, we've actually, uh, historically tried to take a stand, and the FCC, uh, has taken rulings against us because they have mandated that there are X amount of towers, and, and in order to facilitate the growth of an industry they feel is always necessary. So, I, I think we've addressed that historically and found that that's the case. Um, secondly, I don't think the board can take a position and unfortunately and mandate that, um, the owner, uh, disburse funds, um, to the condominium owners. Uh, that's my opinion. I don't think we can do so. Uh, if I'm wrong, uh, I'd appreciate any input from fellow board members. That being said, our principal concern, I believe, was to make sure that each of the owners, condominium owners respectively, and those who would consider purchasing, um, would be informed and updated of what would transpire. I believe the petitioner has done so. Um, and in reference to, uh, Mr. Sullivan's concerns about, um, additional fees, according to the way I read, uh, that particular paragraph fourteen, it, it says that the maintenance and repair and, uh, replacement would all be, um, uh, placed upon, that the debt would be placed upon the declarant. So, that's the way I read that. So, I don't think there would be any additional cost incurred to a condominium owner. Um, the fact that the condominium owner chooses, uh, developer chooses not to reimburse, um, the condominium association is something I don't believe we can get in the middle of. That being said, what we asked the petitioner to do, in my opinion, I believe he's done so, and therefore I would be in favor of the petition. Thank you.
Through you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you very much. Um, question for T-Mobile. Um, now, you claim you, you sent out approximately twenty letters?
Correct.
That's correct. Okay. How many units are there in phase one, in the building one?
Total?
Yeah.
Sixty.
Sixty? Okay. Now, the sign out front, I'm going by the sign right in front of the property, says approximately seventy, seventy units sold. Is that accurate?
I'll defer to Mr. DeCola on the number of units they've sold.
Good evening. I'm Ron DeCola, project manager. That sign's old, just hasn't been taken down. We've lost some sales because of the way the market's been.
Okay, so it's less than that then?
Yes.
Okay, 'cause if that's the case, you, you would have currently forty, approximately forty-some odd purchase and sale agreements to buy these units.
And we'd love to have that position, believe me, but it's, that's not the case.
But you're saying, but you sent out twenty letters, so you're telling me that's not the case?
That, what's not the case? That we have forty?
Yes.
Yeah, that's correct.
So, okay, um, if, in fact, that's, well, how many do you have approximately under agreement this time, may I ask?
Twenty, twenty, between twenty and twenty-two, we're negotiating a couple right now that haven't gone to P and S right now, but they're...
All right, so you're close to this number then of letters?
Very close, yes.
Okay. All right, Mr. Chairman, uh, as I explained, you, we've been trying to work with T-Mobile the last five weeks. Aesthetically, we're happy with this, and we've been trying to work with them. We just asked from the get-go that these buyers, potential buyers, are notified of this. I mean, I'd wanna know about it, and I think you'd wanna know about it.
No, and, and that's fair. And, and probably three or four of the purchasers, both people who are living there and people who are going to be living there, have contacted me and asked me about it.
Okay. Um, well, Mr. Chairman, if in fact that's the case, they sent out twenty letters, and, uh, they've have about the same number of contracts, uh, I would be in favor of this petition. But I, I would like to condition it to, um, a maximum of one cluster. Uh, that being said, once this tower's built, it would be T-Mobile, and that's it. We're not talking a hundred-foot pole here on the top of some built, high-rise somewhere, okay? We got residents. This is an enclosed unit, and, uh, that's what I would like to do, Mr. Chairman, is to, uh, keep a maximum of one cluster on the cell tower. Thank you very much. If in fact...
Good to, good to.
I guess, um, my questions relate to the questions that Mr. Sullivan had asked. What, uh, would happen, uh, counselor, if Omni Point, and probably when Omni Point sells this, and this successor buyer, owner of that, um, cell tower, and what provisions are in there for the maintenance and protection to protect the owners of the units?
T-Mobile under the lease is required to remove the facility?
So, if Omni Point or T-Mobile, as I was saying, if, if and when they sell that property or their, their cell tower, that ends. If they sell their company, that, that ends with it. Who removes it? What happens to the space that it's currently in right now? I, I guess those are questions that I would have if I were a, uh, unit owner. I think Mr. Sullivan had those questions.
If T-Mobile were to be acquired, like, like Sprint and Nextel, the leases would follow the corporate chain, so to speak. So, if T-Mobile were acquired or, um, sold out, the lease, the lease would follow. The lease obligations would flow with, with the new owner of T-Mobile, um, just like AT&amp;T, Wires and Singular merged, and Sprint and Nextel have merged. Singular is now responsible for those old AT&amp;T leases, just as, um, I think Sprint was technically the acquiring entity, just as Sprint is now responsible for, for the Nextel leases. The corporate responsibility still follows with whoever takes assignment of the lease.
Well, I guess my question is, i- it's probably an unlikely event, but I'll, I'll ask it anyway. In the event that whoever is the successor owner decides they don't want the cell tower there, or they don't wanna use it, whose obligation is it to remove it? Is it gonna become a white elephant on top of their building?
No, it's, it would still be the, the lease owner, say. If you, when, one of the provisions dealing with removal deals with termination. So, if you terminate, if you're terminating the lease, you still need to remove the facility. You can't just terminate and walk, and turn your back and walk away. You still need to remove the facility.
So hypothetically, if, if it's sold and they do remove the cell tower in and of its, on top of the roof, that's not a problem because, you know, it's, it's gone, so that it doesn't really leave a void. But the control center is within the building.
It's also removed.
So what happens to that space?
The...
In that event?
The removal obligation, generally speaking, and roughly speaking, is to restore their premises to its original condition or, you know, reasonable wear and tear and casualty accepted, um, or, or to a similar condition as it, as it was originally. Um, and so, again, you're, when you remove the facility, it's not just taking the, the false penthouse, uh, the, the false flue off. It's not just removing that panel antenna. It's removing the equipment itself. Um, and from an own selfish self-interest standpoint, the equipment is fairly valuable, so you wouldn't just abandon it and throw up your hands and, and, and take a walk on it.
But then wouldn't the condo association acquire, um, that problem, and then it may cost them money in legal fees to deal with that and, and to acquire ownership and, and think about a maintenance plan or a use for that void? And I'm asking this question because this is, this, this is a hypothetical, but it, it's, you know, certainly a, a real possibility.
The, the easement itself is not contingent on maintaining the lease with Omni Point, so the easement, the reservation back to the declarant would still hold regardless of, if Omni Point walked away. They would still have the ability to, to re-lease that, and that carrier would have to come back here and get the same approvals from this board, um, or whatever the permit granting authority is under the, the ordinance at that time. But just because Omni Point terminates the, terminates the lease, removes its, removes its antennas, removes its cables, removes its, uh, its, uh, equipment from the, the equipment room, the, the easement reservation is still there for the declarant to go ahead and, and re-lease that if they would, if they would care to.
Or, you know, in a worst-case scenario, they could go in and, and use it for a different use, or petition to use it for a different use, correct?
The, well, again, the, the declarant's use is somewhat limited by his own reservation back to himself. So, if, if it's broad and Omni Point were to vacate the space, then they might be able to make a different use of it, and if that use requires permits and approvals, they're gonna have to go get those. Um, if it's too narrowly tailored and they wanted to open up a bake shop, and they didn't reserve that right, and I, I don't think they did, they certainly wouldn't be able to do that in that equipment space, um, without coming to some, I assume, coming to some sort of agreement with the then condo association. They've reserved what they've reserved back to themselves, and that's it.
Okay. And I know I saw in the original package, now we're going back, you know, a month or so, but there was a letter from, I believe it was, um, from you or your company to Mr. Gagnon saying, this is to confirm that he reserves all... "This is to confirm that he reserves all rights for final location, if it's approved, for final location and final, all the specifics." So, if this were to be approved, what's to stop him from changing the specifics?
I think you're referring to the letter of authorization. I just wanted to double check.
Right, and I think I am too. I don't have it with me. I apologize.
You are. It was the letter of authorization that was included in the package. We now actually have a fully executed lease. So, that lease document is now what controls, the lease document matches what we've proposed. We'd be limited...
So, that letter doesn't mean anything anymore?
So, well, no, it's still evidence of our authority to be here. We just now have better authority in that we actually now have a property interest. But the approval's what's going to control. If, for some reason, there needed to be a change between us and the lesser, and it was still within the scope of the easement, but it was a significant change, we'd be back here telling you we need a change. But we've worked with them, we've signed the lease, we've proposed this. I'm confident this is the, what we're going to construct if approved.
One second. I guess the last question, and the most important one I have, on your master deed, page three, number seven, you have a clause in it that specifically, that specifically states that the building and units are supposed to be used for residential purposes only, and may only be used for those purposes, or some connection to that. So, I guess my question to you is, what's the connection between the, I'll call it, commercial use of a cell tower and the residential use of a residential condominium building?
I'm sorry, which paragraph?
Paragraph number seven, page three of the master deed.
Okay. First of all, it's the units specifically, and then...
That's not what it says.
Well, first it says the units, then it says the building, other than the units and common elements.
No, first it says, first it says, number seven, "Use of buildings and units."
Right.
Then it says, "What the units are intended for residential purposes," then it goes on to say that the buildings, other than the units and the common elements, may be used only for such ancillary uses as required in connection with such purposes. And the way I interpret that is, if you wanna use the building for something related to a residential use, and it's an ancillary use, then that's something that everybody understands when they get, when they look at this, when they do the title and they look at this deed. To me, it's a little bit misleading if I were an owner, and now there's a spin-off to your condominium complex as a, you know, in some sort of commercial use or for-profit ancillary use that's not connected to any requirement for residential purposes.
Well, you need to read the document as a whole, and the reservation of rights is very clear and very specific about what's being reserved and the additional use that's allowed to be maintained. That paragraph is, and I didn't draft the document, I don't represent Grand View, so I'm just reading it as much as you are. But the paragraph basically says, "If I buy a unit, I can't open, I can't permit to, or try to permit to open up a Burger King out of my unit. I can't try and make, I can't operate a commercial venture out of my unit." Because that's for the general protection of the residents, that I'm not going to have an intrusive use on the property. There is still the express reservation and allowance for the wireless communications use. So, you need to read everything together.
I understand that, but when you read this, there is an ambiguity because you could also read that as a potential buyer of a unit and say, in using your example, "Okay, I know when I buy this, that nobody's gonna put a Dunkin' Donuts in a little squared-out area of, you know, whatever, a unit, the size of a unit, on the first floor. Nobody's gonna put a Burger King. Nobody's gonna do that." Now, to me, a Burger King or Dunkin' Donuts and a cell tower are not really comparable, but I'm not living there, and I think it's a legitimate concern that the unit owners have with that. It was, if they read this, they're thinking that there's not gonna be anything else there for commercial use. And I agree, if the use was going to benefit the condominium, then you could argue that it has an ancillary residential purpose. You know, when I read that, I don't see it. I agree with you that it does say that later on.
I mean, I could argue that the provision of wireless services, so people can use their phones, they can use their PDAs, is still ancillary to a residential use, and we have people who've abandoned landlines to use their phone as their sole means of communication. But I don't think I need to go that far. With all due respect, I think the reservation is clear. And if you read paragraph seven alone, on its own, with nothing else, no other parts of this document, then the point might be well-made, but you need to read the entire document. If you don't read the entire document for the master deed of the Grand View condominiums, or if you have a question and you don't resolve it, you don't ask Mr. DeColo or their group, you don't ask your own attorney, there needs to be some responsibility on the person who receives this, who signs the purchase and sale agreement that says, "I've received it, I've reviewed it, and I'm signing this purchase and sale agreement." And if you read this in its entirety, it is one thing that is very, very clear, that there can be a wireless communications use on the property, and that there's an easement for it.
Okay. You all set, Steve?
I'm all set, yeah.
Now, this master deed, was that, I have a date here for August, I mean, October seventeenth. Is that when this was notarized for these provisions?
It was recorded on the, it was recorded on the eighteenth, so...
What's that?
It was recorded on the eighteenth, the day it was notarized.
Eighteenth of October?
October.
Okay, now, how many individuals had agreements or bought prior to that, October eighteenth? Any purchase and sale prior to that? Where this wasn't recorded and they didn't know?
Yes, how many purchase and sale agreements were in place prior to this?
Correct, yeah, correct.
You know, honestly, I don't know. It's been a very fluid situation. I don't know how many exactly, but, I mean, certainly, probably twenty-five, maybe more.
So, twenty-five people prior to when this master deed was recorded?
Prior to going to record, yes.
Okay, and so, in other words, the twenty-five people that had purchase and sales, they didn't have this master deed, or it wasn't recorded, so they really couldn't go by this master deed?
Well, they had receipt of it when they signed the purchase and sale agreement. As Attorney Grossman said, that was part of the condominium presentation, and they acknowledged the receipt of that presentation. A part of that presentation is the master deed. Going to record just memorializes the whole, the whole package.
Okay. Also, the letter we have that you sent out, we get a couple of calls in the office, the people didn't show up today, but they did call us. They had one question, and I don't think it says it here on the letter. "Where is the revenue going for this cell tower?" And that wasn't on the letter whatsoever. Now, we understand that the revenue's going to Mr. Gagnon, that's correct?
That's correct, essentially, Mr. Gagnon.
The owner of...
The owner, the developer, yes.
Okay, right. That's my only problem. I think these people here bought the condos, bought the condos, they're gonna start their own association, and they got a cell tower, they got no revenue coming in. My opinion, and my feelings, I think they should get something, whether it's half, or, I mean, and that's something you people have to decide on your own. But I think they should get something out of this cell tower. They're the ones that are gonna be pulling up with the aggravation of people going there that monitor this twice a month, having to deal with this cell tower. Maybe it's gonna be a problem with the quality of life, I don't know. We haven't heard from any other cell towers, but there is that possibility, I guess. I think they should get something out of it. I don't think they should just have a cell tower on top of their roof and not get anything out of it where they're gonna be living. And that's pretty much, they own that building, they're the condo association, and they don't have any say what's going on with that cell tower. Somebody can go in there any hours of the day, just walk in that place and go up top and check on that tower, or go wherever that facility's gonna be stored, and check on that. And these people don't have a clue who that individual is. I mean, I think they should have something coming out of that, and that's my opinion. I don't think it's fair to them whatsoever. So, I'm gonna listen, see what the board members have to say. Good, Vesa.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Counsel, how many antennas gonna be mounted to that rooftop?
One facade mounted and two within that false fluse, for a total of three.
Total of three?
That's correct.
When you lease the rooftop from the Grand View condo, or Mr. Gagnon, the lease is for the whole rooftop, right?
No, it's for our, it's for our area shown on the lease exhibit.
Can you, now you have three antennas gonna be mounted on the rooftop. Can you, in the futures, add on the number to it?
Not without additional relief from this board, at least.
From this board, of course, but the contract you have, or the lease you have with Mr. Gagnon?
We generally do reserve the right to make upgrades, but certainly not without relief from this board.
Do you also reserve the right to sublease that rooftop to some of the business, some of the antenna business?
T-Mobile can sublease, and they can assign.
And the money, again, go to Mr. Gagnon, is that correct?
Under the reservation of rights, that's correct, and under the lease.
I see. Thank you very much.
Jack, do you have anything? All set? Donna?
Mr. Chairman, if I may, this seems to, as I was standing here, seems to be very analogous to another situation that we come across fairly often, which is, and it's not just unique to wireless communications, where you have an owner of a property who takes, subject to an easement, whether that easement's for access, whether that easement's subject to National Grid or whomever. There are certain rights that go along with the easement, that are germane to the easement holder, and you may have, you know, some limited say, and you do, and you do have sometimes a little bit of a burden. In terms of this use, it is an extremely passive use. In terms of access, generally, the access is during business hours unless there's, unless there's an emergency. And our cell techs don't make a habit of going there at two in the morning for no reason. They work general business hours.
This is actually the first time we've had a cell tower going on a seven-story residential building. It's either been a church steeple, which the church is in favor for it, or it's been a business, where the business has been in favor for it, and there is not a problem doing with the business individuals at all. I mean, there's no quality-of-life disturbance or whatnot. This is the first time we've had a residential complex coming to play and where the residents, all the residents own the building. And they get nothing out of this building, out of this cell tower, where they own the building. I mean, it just doesn't seem right to me. I just, it just doesn't make sense, you know what I mean?
Again, I would argue the provision of service is one thing, I would, you know, and...
Yeah, and you're here for OmniPoint, you're trying to do the best you can, and I understand that. But we're here to protect the people that are buying, buying that, buying those units. And that's what our job is to do.
And they all received a copy of the master document, they all had a chance to review these?
Yeah, but we've got a couple of calls in the office, like I said, and they don't know where the revenue's going. So, now, if they're watching TV tonight, they're probably gonna find out, yeah, the revenue's going towards another individual. It's not going to the condo association.
It's right there playing in black and white in the master deed. I can't make someone read the document that gets put in front of them.
Again, I don't, it's, I'm only one vote, but I'm not gonna be in favor for this. But I'm gonna call, have a roll call here and see what we got, so...
I make a motion to approve.
Give me a second, please. Call roll.
Mr. Noon?
Denied.
Mr. Belangia?
Denied.
Mr. Gary?
Denied.
Denied, you've been denied with five votes. I wanna thank you for your time. I wanna thank the neighbors for coming out. Thank you very much. Okay, Karen Ward, 26 Phillips Street. "To convert existing carriage building and single-family unit with insufficient land area per dwelling unit and quiet parking." Yes, ma'am. Will you state your name and address and tell us what you'd like to do with the property?
My name's Karen J. Ward, and I live at 26 Phillips Street in Lowell.
Can you bring the mic down and try so you can speak right into, there you go, that's great. That's fine, that's great, okay, thank you.
My name is Karen Ward, and I live at 26 Phillips Street in Lowell here. And I'd like to put in, just add to the, make the barn into a home, for me, an apartment, like an in-law apartment.
Okay, so you have the carriage house in the back, and you wanna make it living space for yourself, is that correct?
For myself, right. So the children could stay in the front house and just have it one floor, handicap accessible. I'm not getting any younger and just, you know what I mean?
Okay.
So I don't have to look towards doing that later.
All right, let's see if there's anybody here that wants to speak in behalf of this. Is there anybody here that'd like to speak in favor for this petition? Favor, 26 Phillips Street, in favor? Is there anybody here in opposition? In opposition? Okay. Let's see what we have here. Okay, so, Ms. Ward, Mrs. Ward, you'd like to rebuild that carriage house in the back, and you're gonna maintain and live there yourself, is that correct? And your daughter, I was up there today, your daughter said she's gonna get married, and she's living in the main house?
Right, in the front, uh-huh.
Question, as far as water, sewer, are you gonna be tied right into the street? Is that what you plan on doing for, is there any water and sewer in the property? Do you have any type of plans, what you propose to do with this carriage house? You making any changes with it, or any windows, or...
We're not gonna change the footprint at all, no.
Okay, the footprint's gonna stay the same, but how about...
It's gonna stay exactly the same.
How about windows, any added windows to the carriage house at all?
There'll probably be a few added windows, yeah.
Okay.
Not a, maybe, well, let me see, probably a couple of added windows.
Okay. Do you have any type of sketch or anything, any idea what it's gonna?
Do I have any?
Any type of drawings or anything, what it's gonna look like? Nothing?
No, I didn't, I didn't hire an architect. I thought about it, but then I thought that it'd be better to get the permission first, then hire the architect.
Yeah, because you'll need that for the building, for the building, if it does get approved.
I'm probably not doing this right.
Okay, well, I think the board members kinda know what the list...
I did talk to Nick Saris about it, and he said it was feasible to do that.
Yeah, I was up there today. It looked pretty sound, the building.
And I don't want anything fancy. I just want something, you know, accessible, you know, for an elderly person, that's all.
Well, whatever you do back there, I'm sure the neighbors will be happy because it does need some cosmetic work as far as some type of vinyl siding or some type of siding on there and to be cleaned up.
Right, it needs to be stabilized and...
The main house looks like you just did something to the main house as far as rehabbing the house itself, or so, just recently. So, that looks good. Let's see what the board members have to say. Good, Corey.
Through you, Mr. Chairman. Mrs. Ward, how many bedrooms do you intend to put in that, in the carriage house?
Just one.
Just one?
One.
Okay, well, I noticed, as the chairman stated, the house is very well-maintained. I credit you there. And your neighbor to your left has, I believe, a carriage house in the back, too, almost identical to yours.
Yes, Mrs. Carnan, mhm.
And this is finished, and, you know, I don't see neighbors in here in opposition of it. So, I'm willing to vote in favor for the petition, Mr. Chairman. Thank you very much.
Okay, great. Good, Jack.
Through you, Mr. Chairman. There's a small driveway. Do you currently drive, you have one vehicle?
It's, pardon, I'm sorry?
You have a vehicle, there's a small driveway that I presume is just used for the carriage house?
You could fit two or three cars in the driveway, uh-huh. So, it's for the house and the carriage house, huh?
That small driveway to the right, I believe, that is for the carriage house?
To the left of the house, yes.
To the left of the house, excuse me.
But you could fit two or three cars in that driveway, uh-huh.
You currently drive, and it'll be only, you have one vehicle, yourself?
I have one, yes.
And it'll only be one bedroom in the carriage house, is that correct?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
That's all I wanna put in, mhm.
Good.
I just have a couple of questions. I went by it, and it did look very congested in that whole area, but I think the whole area is congested anyway. There's nothing you can do about that. It's already an extremely congested neighborhood, one of the most congested I've seen.
Right.
But the fact is, that building is there right now. And it's been there, obviously, for quite a while, probably than I've been here. And it's not in great shape, so, you know, if there was no building there, I don't think I could support this because it would just be making it more congested. I don't see how renovating that so you could have somewhere to live, so long as you're gonna be the person to live there. I guess my concern is, and my assumption is, when and if you ever sell the property, it will be sold as one piece, correct?
Oh, of course.
It's not separated, so that... So that, that's an issue that I think that, uh, is important to understand. And I think the other...
Right.
...issue is, uh, it, it can't, for safety issues, I, I would think that, um, renovating it would make that whole general plot safer than it currently is right now.
Yes, I think so.
The issues with, obviously, it seems pretty dark back there at night, so is that a fair statement? That you have no, uh, lighting really on that building?
There's no lighting, no.
It's pretty dark. I guess my question is, uh, and my concern is, uh, if this is approved, you'd obviously have to have lighting.
Of course.
But where it is so congested there, I wouldn't want you to over-illuminate the neighborhood. In other words, to cause somebody who is used to having, you know, a dark area at night, all of a sudden illuminated. So I would, if I were to vote to approve this, I would want a condition that addressed that issue, uh, with lighting. Normally, we're asking, um, applicants to provide, you know, ample lighting or more lighting than they have for safety issues. There, I think you, you're gonna have to do lighting, enough lighting pursuant to the building code.
Uh-huh.
Um, but I just want a condition in to make sure that it's not over-illuminated, or unnecessarily illuminated, um, as to distract the neighbors who are...
I don't think it would be, no.
Around there.
No, I work two jobs, I'm not home very much anymore.
Yeah, and, and I think that I would also require a, a condition that, um, that, that you are living there.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
And, and if you don't, then, um, maybe the issue has to be revisited, but I think...
Well, my daughter's getting married next September, and that's, it, her and her husband deserve some privacy, and that's why I'd like to move into the back house. But I'd also like to keep my daughter with me. I mean, we had a bunch of kids in there before, and I'm down to just the one, the youngest daughter. Do you know what I mean, so?
I do, yeah.
And I don't really wanna be alone, you know? It'd be nice to keep her, but I, but not to intrude on her either, if that makes sense.
I understand.
What's I say?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a tape change.
Okay. Okay, I don't think the board has a problem, uh, for what you wanna do. The, uh, you have an existing building there now, um, um, you're just gonna rehab the building and make it better than what it is. But, uh, Mr. Gary, come up with a, a good point as far as, uh, the lighting out back. And also, uh, it will be a condition that we approve this, it's gonna be for you and you only. I mean, if you go to move out, this has to come back to the zoning Board of Appeals, and we'll have to go through the whole process again. Or if you sell the property, the people are gonna buy the property, we'll have to come back to the zoning Board of Appeals, and we'll have to, um, go through the same public hearing that we're doing right now. So in other words, we're, we're, um, if this does get approved, it's gonna be for you and you only in the back. In other words, what we're trying to prevent is a family of five moving into that back house and causing...
That would never happen, I'm not gonna...
Nothing but problems in that street, because there is congestion on that street, and, uh, there's a lot of, and there's a very tight for parking. So that's what we're trying to prevent, so, um, if you just, like I said, if you decide to move out, you'll have to come back to this board and get approval again, so.
It's just gonna be big enough for one person, it's not gonna be big enough for any more than that.
Okay, but that's something where you just have to, to protect the neighborhood, that's just something we have to do.
Pardon?
To protect the neighborhood, that's, that's one of the conditions that we're gonna put on, put on this, if it does, if it does get approved. I mean, it's, uh, it's up to the board members. Um, Jack, you all set?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. I agree with my fellow colleagues, I think those conditions would be warranted, and, uh, I think it'll clean up the, uh, area and, uh, make it more presentable to the neighborhood. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Okay, I need a motion.
Um, Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve with the following conditions, that, uh, the unit is, uh, is a maximum of one bedroom, and is to remain owner-occupied. And if the property is conveyed...
Well, it's gonna be owner-occupied by Mrs. Ward, that's gonna be the condition. Once she moves out, or if they sell the, the whole parcel, um, um, they'll have to come back to this, this board.
They have to come back to the, if the property's conveyed, you have to come back to the board for approval, yes.
Okay. And also about the lighting, did you get the lighting too?
Yeah, and the lighting would stay limited, uh, maybe a motion light of some sort, so, uh, is an idea, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Gary, do you have some type of lighting you wanna put down as far as a condition? Or did you really, some type of, just some type of wall lighting outside, just all lights up?
Think of just the wall lighting outside, the necessary lighting, no, no more lighting than required by the building code, I guess is what I'm looking for. Um, Corey, Corey's, uh, suggestion with motion, uh, lighting, I was thinking about that at first, but then I'm thinking, maybe that's gonna create more of a nuisance than anything else, because a squirrel runs by it, and all of a sudden, your lights go on and off, and somebody's gonna think something may be wrong there. So maybe just leave it as, uh, lighting pursuant to, no more than required by zoning.
Okay, great. Uh, did somebody second that? We need someone to second. Donna? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Newak?
Approve.
Mr. Flynn?
Approve with conditions.
Approve with conditions.
Approve with conditions.
Approve with conditions.
Been approved with five votes, uh, we need to sign some paperwork, and good luck.
Thank you very much.
Can you step up to the table here and see Diane?
Okay.
Just sign some paperwork for us, thank you.
Thank you.
Julio, excuse me, Julio Pastrana, 96 Dingwall Street. To subdivide an existing lot to construct a new, new home in undersized lot with insufficient frontage, and to maintain existing structure on undersized lot lacking frontage, uh, front yard and the side yard setbacks.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, uh, James Flood, 81 Bridge Street, representing Julio Pastrana, who's with me tonight, who's the owner, and his son Julio Junior. Uh, would be for you tonight because he would like to subdivide the property, which presently consists of approximately 15,0257 square feet into two separate lots. And the reason for this is so Julio Junior, who is a, he's a City of Lowell firefighter, uh, construct a home and live close to his father next door. It's not to, uh, subdivide it to sell it, but it's for Julio to build the house for himself. So in honor to do that, we need a variance to subdivide, subdivide the lot into two undersized lots lacking required frontage. One lot would be 7,036 square feet, and the other lot, 9,407 square feet. We would also need a variance to maintain the existing structure on the other lot and without the required frontage, side yard, and front yard setback. It's an older home, it's been there for quite a while. This is very similar to the request that this board approved in March of 2005 at 190, 129 Dingwall Street, up the street, where we, we subdivided a lot of 12,000 square feet into two 6,000 square foot lots. So these lots are a little bigger. Uh, the house, I, I've given you, uh, a copy of plans. He's been working with John Dowling to design a, a house, and the house would be approximately 24 by 32 feet, uh, and it would meet all other, uh, City of Lowell zoning requirements pertaining to setbacks. So we're not looking for any variances on the, on the new home. I've also given you a breakdown of the assessor's list, which shows that the size of most of the lots in the area, they run from 4,200 square feet to, most of them, 9,500 square feet. So the, the lots, as we proposed, are, are very similar to what's there. I've also given you a copy of the GIS that shows, shows the neighborhood, it shows the small lots, so, um... Uh, Mr. Pastrana has lived there for many years, and at the time he purchased it, the property was Zoned S2, which was changed in the, uh, with the new zoning in 2004, which increased the size from 7,000 square foot to 10,000 square feet. So if it was, if they hadn't changed the zoning, he'd be in conformance, you know, he, he wouldn't be seeking that variance today, so... Uh, because of the size of the other hot, uh, the other homes in the neighborhood, uh, and the fact that he wants to construct a single-family home, uh, I, I hope that the request, requested relief could be granted without, uh, substantial detriment to the public good and without derogating from the intent of the zoning ordinance, and that, uh, since he's gonna use it for a single-family home, I think if it was denied, he could suffer substantial hardship. So I'd ask that you, people vote favorably on this request.
Thank you. Is there anybody here that'd like to speak in favor for this petition, in favor? Anybody here in opposition? Opposition? Okay, so what you're, Mr. Flood, what you're saying is, uh, the father lives in the house that now with, with the, with the lot that he wants to subdivide and sell it to his, his, his...
His son.
His son.
Yeah.
Okay.
They're both here, if you have any questions.
Yeah, and evidently, they must get along with the neighbors, 'cause the neighbors aren't here to oppose it. Um, that was my big concern, so, um, we're, there aren't any neighbors here to oppose it. I really don't have a big problem with it. Now, I'm looking at the elevation plan of the house, there's not gonna be any type of garage, this is no garage at all.
Nothing's planned at this time, like I said, he's still working, he's working with John Dowling to come up with a plan, but we can't come up with anything final until we know we're gonna be all set, so...
Well, is this the plan, 'cause this is what the plan we're looking at, is this the plan you propose to put up? Or is he, the plan, the plan of putting some type of garage under, or, um...
I, I don't think he's planning a garage.
No, no garage at all? So in other words, this plan you're submitting to the board is pretty, is the plan that you're gonna, the house you're gonna build? Is that correct? Well, you wanna step up to the podium and just state your name and address?
Yes, I am Julio Pastrana Junior.
Yeah.
Um, well, that's the plan that I'm working with right now with John Dowling. It's not 100% until, he said, this is something that we can do. But it's not 100% right now, because I don't know if it was gonna be allowed or not.
Well, it's definitely gonna be allowed, it, it's a lot, it's allowable, it'll fit in the footprint that you have over here.
As I said, whatever, whatever goes in, it's gonna be similar to that, we'll conform to all other zoning requirements.
Okay.
All the other setbacks.
All right, I, I don't have a problem with it. Like I said, and my big concern was the neighbors, and the neighbors aren't here to oppose it, so, um, they must be for this petition. Um, good, Cory.
Through you, Mr. Chairman. Um, now, how many bedrooms, uh, Counsel, is this house gonna?
Three.
Three bedrooms?
Three, yeah.
Now, um, as the chairman stated, um, then you must have kept communication with the neighbors, nobody's here in opposition, so that's a good sign. But is it possible to get some off-street parking?
I think there's plenty of room that, on the, on the lot to, to come in, in for parking. There's plenty of room there.
Right, okay, the first 25 feet, say?
Or you can go beside it and go to the back if you had to, it's 9,000 square feet. So there's plenty of room there.
Okay, yeah, if only we could get the cars off the street, um, that's, that's basically my concern along with the neighborhood, which, which nobody's here, so I'm for the petition, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Good, Jack.
Uh, Counsel, and that, um, front entrance for the parking, that's for both houses, is that correct?
He's got a garage on the existing house, and the new house will have plenty of room to park.
From this side, right, yeah?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, thank you very much.
Yeah, I just, um, you know, looking at the neighborhood and driving by there, it seemed like, uh, it, it wouldn't have any detrimental impact whatsoever. Uh, and I didn't understand at first that, uh, it was a family relationship, and that makes it an easier decision for me, so I'd be in favor of this, uh, so long as the house is, is this house or something similar. And I guess the only thing I wanna avoid is then having, driving by there and seeing a garage that makes it, uh, a lot more congested than it would look if this house were there, so...
And like I said, everything will be within that footprint anyway, so we're not looking for any other variances.
Yeah, I, I think the proposed house will fit right in the neighborhood also. I mean, the, the house that, that the father lives in is kinda long and narrow...
Yeah.
Also, so it kinda like, it'll fit right in with, with the neighborhood. Jack, do you have anything you want to add? All set? Donna, all set? I need a motion.
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. McVane? Approve. Mr. Flynn?
Approve.
Mr. Belangia?
Approve.
Mr. Gary?
Approve.
Approve, been approved with five vo, five votes, we need to sign some paperwork, please, thank you. And good luck. Okay, we're gonna, we're gonna vote on the, uh, rules and procedures of the ZBA. There has been a few changes, um, in the rules and procedures, so, um, everybody did get a copy last meeting, and they've looked at it, I'm sure, uh, so I need a motion.
A motion to approve.
Need a second? Uh, everybody in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Vote, cheer, vote yes. I need a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Everybody in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Cheer, vote yes.